Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call as always very kind of council meeting of September the 4th, 2018 to order. And we're going to ask Councilman Ravenell to give us a moment of thanks before we proceed.
Those by hand in the word of prayer. Father God, we come calling and beholden thy just name, thanking you for the most precious gift that you can restore upon mankind, that is the gift of life.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Ravenell. I hope each and every one of the council persons have had the opportunity to look at the minutes of August 20th meeting, and if you have any correction or notation, please note. If not, I would appreciate a motion as second that those minutes be received as written.
Second, Mr.?
Moved by Mr. Cooper Smith and second by Mr. Billy DeOyens that minutes be received as written. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, the ayes have it and the motions carried. Again, we'd like to welcome you to our meeting this afternoon, and as always, we have public comments of three areas, public comments of agenda items, and public comments of other matters. If you have any comments on the agenda items, we're now open the floor for public comments. You may approach, report them and address that item unless it's a public hearing on that item, and if it is, then you'll wait until you get to that item on the agenda. The others, the public comments of other matters, that means that anything that you would like to bring before county council, you may come at that time. The floor is now open for agenda items comments. Here and now, we'll close that portion of it and open the floor for public comments of other matters, other matters, any other matters that anyone would like to bring before council at this time, you may approach. Here and now, we will close that portion of the comment and go into our regular agenda, and the first item on the presentation of the fire sprinkler tax credit. Is Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. South Carolina Code 12-6-3622 is a code that provides for a local taxing authority that can allow a taxpayer who installs a new or existing fire sprinkler system into a building that it, that the, where the sprinkler system is not required. That would allow the person or the entity in the commercial nature to be able to take a tax credit from the property tax credit of up to 25% in regards to the expenses of putting that sprinkler system in. We have been approached by a commercial entity about using those tax credits for insulation of the sprinkler system. This allows the person to take the 25% tax credit off of the property tax. At this point, we have not done one of these or have not dealt with one of these tax credits so far, and not, is not widely used, so our recommendation to you is that we study this in a committee to make sure that we understand the revenue implications of this particular credit before we move forward with any type of request that may come because of this.
Council, you have any questions for Minister Administrator? Or do you want to follow his lead or do we need to study, put it in a committee, make sure that we know what we're doing? Any questions coming?
May I ask you a question on that?
Yes, sir.
What is the approximate cost of the average bill to put a sprinkler system in the average size of a commercial building?
I would have to yield to one of our building officials, but for the particular project that's being requested, it's $250,000 for the average.
We've got 25% of $250,000?
Yes, sir. And which I yield to you for actual cost of commercial?
It varies. It's just, it's all across the board. For a commercial structure, it's hard to average a commercial structure, but generally it's going to be at least about $80,000 for a commercial structure. For, for a structure to be sprinkled, it's going to have to be pretty large, and so there's a pretty substantial cost into it. Residential structure, you're probably looking at about $10 to $15 a square foot. It's a little bit cheaper doing for residential structure. So if you have a house that's, you know, 2,000 square foot, it might cost you $20,000.
I agree.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. If it's state law, state tax, you don't have any choice but accept it.
Yes, it's, it's not, it's one of those credits that's allowed by the municipality or the governing body, so you don't have to accept the credit, but if you do, it comes off the property tax portion, not the estate tax portion, and that's, that's the reason why we have to figure out what the overall implications is of how many people will come at one time, how many projects, you know, that type of stuff, because then that would have budget implications, because you, you basically giving them a credit off of the property tax.
Well, it's not the law. We don't have to do it.
No, sir. It's up to the governing body.
I guess second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wimbley and second by Mr. Ellis that we put that presentation of the tax credit finance committee and Mr. Mayor Clerk, you've notified it personally. So it has been moved in second, all in favor of that, say if you know anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motions carried. Thank you. First, the resolution honoring Ben Smith Jr.'s 100th birthday, and I will yield to council person that's district, Mr. Ravenell, to read that.
State of South Carolina County of Orangeburg, where I was honoring Sir Ben Smith Jr.'s 100th birthday. Where Mr. Ben Smith Jr. was born on July 7th, 1918, where Mr. Ben Smith Jr. is the past president of the parent of upward bound, Mr. Smith, Mr. Ben Smith Jr. served proudly in the armed force of the United States of America, and now therefore be it resolved that the county, that the Orangeburg County Council does hereby acknowledge the outstanding contribution and service Mr. Ben Smith has made to the county and the county of Orangeburg. Be it further resolved that this fourth day of September 2018, a copy of this resolution may be spread across the permanent written record of Orangeburg County. Atest, as county forte clerk of council, all the county council chairs, Johnny Wright, Johnny Ravenell, County Council District 2.
Can you get my motion, Mr. Ravenell?
Mr. Chairman, what was approved of the resolution?
Second. Moved by Mr. Billy DeOyens and second by Mr. Hayward Livingston that we approve the resolution that has been read by Mr. Ravenell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, have it, the motions carried. Item 3 also is a resolution authorizing revision of employee's handbook and agrees as follows. State of South Carolina County of Orangeburg Resolution 2018-09-04, Resolution Authorizing Revision of Employee Handbook. Where the Orangeburg County Council here adopt the Orangeburg County Employee Handbook on June 50th, 2009, and where a heading Employee Handbook bypasses of the ordinance 2009-06-15-02, Section 1B, of which impowers the council to make changes to employee handbook via resolution, and where the new law requires adoption before September the 14th, 2018, of a location, location statement with a particular employee handbook policy, and where as council finds that it is in the county's best interest to timely comply with the new law described above, and council finds that the new policy set forth on Exhibit A complies with new legal requirements. Now therefore, in a meeting duly assembled, council hereby resolve as follows. Council approves substituting the policy set forth on Exhibit A for the policy on the same topic that has most recently been contained in the Orangeburg County Employee Handbook. Exhibit A is attached to and incorporated by reference of this resolution as it set forth here for council hereby direct the county administrator to, one, update the county website in accordance with this resolution, and two, give notice of the update to all county employees. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon approval by the Orangeburg County Council, adopted and approved in a meeting during the assembly this fourth day of September 2018. Is I sure that I get a motion and somebody?
Yes, sir.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Mr. Johnny Ravenell that we pass that resolution authorizing the revision of the employee handbook. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item number four is an audit, and this is third reading, and this is an audit to change the zoning designation of the following parcel on the tax map, number 0173-0, I mean, -16-05-015, at 1523 Greg Street from residential general to commercial general. Mr. Administrator or Senator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission met on June 13th, 2018. This is a request that was put in by Robert Jackson to have the property at 1523 Greg Street, which is in Council District 7, be changed from residential general to commercial general. The property was commercially used in the past, it was burned and never rebuilt. The owner wishes to reestablish the auto repair business. Two neighbors came to support the request, there was no opposition. We also made sure that it was noted that during the second reading, the councilmen from that district requested that the business stay kept up and clean around it, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and this is third and final approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move it through.
Second. Moved by Mr. Billy DeOyens and second by Mr. Hayward Livingston that we approve the third reading on this audit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motions carried. Item five is also an audit, it's second reading, and this is an audit providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds in one of most series tax exempt or taxable in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 to fund the purchase of county vehicles and equipment, authorizing the county administrator to prescribe the form and details of the bonds and providing for the payment of the bonds and the disposition of the proceeds of the bonds, providing wiring in anticipation of issuance of the bonds and other matters related thereto. Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a, a bond that's put together to basically finance the additional vehicles for mainly trash compactors for the additional convenience sites. We hope to purchase 22 trash compactors for one new compactor for each convenience site, as well as additional shared vehicles, building and grounds vehicles, Star Team vehicles, taser equipment for the sheriff's department, as well as the salt trucks as we discussed in the budget hearings during the summer, and additional litter control, color works and pool vehicles.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions from council? Yes, sir.
Mr. Administrator, with these new fleet of equipment that's being changed out?
Yes, sir.
Is there, to be grouped in additional? What are the reasons for asking that question is, summertime, we have a lot of problem with grass cutting and another boom mow and thing of that sort, and sometimes is there an attractor that's versatile that we's product potentially could include in this? And maybe have that piece apparatus taken off and put on, and try to use something else doing that?
Not for this particular one, because it wasn't practiced involved, but since the last meeting, we've discussed, I had discussions with Director of Public Works, so I'm just here, there's some committees here, and I can yield to him, but he had, he had reached out to the company about coming up with a fix for that particular issue that we had, and they were supposed to be working towards that in the mindset to allow the company to alleviate the problem first before we go to route of swapping out equipment, and I'll, I'll yield to Henry if he had any additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Everything you just said is absolutely correct, and at this time, that particular camp that had the problem is up and running and doing fine, and the company has made the necessary upgrades for us.
This, this is a result of the work session that we had that when we had to last, and because of climate change, and wherever you stand on that is your own personal belief, but what we have seen, and maybe just my luck as administrator, we've seen natural disasters every year. It's snowing more frequently, we have ice more frequently. District 3 and the schools down there were really, they were hamstringed and handcuffed when we had the ice, because a lot of the bridges and overpasses that were not state roads did not get salt put on them, so there was a lot of areas that couldn't function because the priority for DOT is the first to do state roads, where you start with the interstates, overpasses, and they only do state roads. So any salting that needed to be done on local roads with local bridges in the most rural districts had to have situations where you needed a salt truck. One of the biggest problems we had during the last icing event was actually within the district, and it was a partial between all three of you individuals who represent the city of Orangeburg proper, the bypass area, when that hill froze up, you basically, commerce was basically stopped during that area, and that we couldn't get 18 vehicles up the hill, up John C., up anywhere because of the icing, and it required salting, but some of those areas were not the priority of DOT. And for our sake, we're not talking about a full DOT salting solution. We have found a solution that is an attachment that will attach to a dump truck that we can do the salting from the dump truck with the attachment that we found, and we made a deal with DOT that they will provide the salt for us in the event we have those situations, so we don't have to stop the salt. It was, it's a better situation for our constituents, so that, you know, the old saying, God help those who help themselves, instead of us waiting around in a disaster, which has never been our model. Our model is anytime we have a disaster, we want to have the men, the women, the training and the equipment to put this county back together as quick as possible. We've done that for floods, hurricanes, ice storms, you name it, and that's just another arsenal that we feel we need, is to have two of those trucks ready and available, because when those things happen, you have a 24 operation, we have a major hospital. A lot of times, the motivators are having to go keep the, the roads straight to the hospital, so that the ambulance and the emergency services and those people can still function at the hospital. That's a lot of behind the scene work, that you can tear thousands of dollars in motivating blades by trying to scrape ice off the road versus having some salt to put down the mill. And those events are happening more frequently, over and over, and it's just a necessary evil that we think we, it's time that we finally have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other, the motion is second, and we pass this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm so moved that we made these purchases.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Billy DeOyens and second by Mr. Ellis that pass that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motions carried. Item number six is the presentation of planning commission resolution and audits, first reading.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission met on August 8th, 2018 to consider a request from the City Road Holding LLC, this is to rezone the property at 163 City Road on Forest and Agriculture to Commercial General. This is for rental, rental equipment business, there's no opposition from the adjacent property owner, and the planning commission voted unanimously for approval.
This is in District 5, Mr. Jennings District. Any questions concerning about that? And I could have get a motion and second, that we pass that.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Mr. Ravenell that we pass that as recommended by the planning commission. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, the motions carried. Item seven is also a presentation of planning commission resolution, this is in District 4, Mr. Hayward District, and this is a first reading. You too, Administrator, on that, is to change the designation also?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The planning commission at August 8th meeting also considered a request from Mount Dula PH Church to rezone the property at 2610 96 Road in Council District 4 from Forest and Agriculture Commercial General. This is to allow the digital sign, there was no opposition, and the planning commission voted unanimously for approval.
Could I get a motion and a second?
Still hold, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Moved by Mr. Hayward Livingston from that district there, second by Mr. Billy DeOyens that we pass that also. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motions carried. Item number eight is also a presentation of the planning commission resolution and audits, first reading, and this is to change the zoning designation also for Springfield Baptist Church and Old, Old Number 6 Highway, this is in District 1.
Yes, sir. This is the same as that request, Mr. Chairman, to allow a digital sign. This one just happens to be in your district on 11064, Number 6 Highway, but it's the same as that one, it was voted on unanimously and recommended for approval.
Could I get a motion and a second that we pass this?
The movement, Chairman.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenell and second by Ms. Cooper Smith that we pass item 8 on the recommendations from the planning commission. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, and the motions carried. Item number nine is an audit first reading and consideration of committee referral and audits amending Orangeburg County Court of Audits. Young?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is a amendment that we have to make to basically keep our Court of Ordinances, books and the websites legal. We have to update as far as municipal corporations, the company that we use to basically keep up with the changes and amendments that we do. Every council meeting that you approve or finalize an ordinance, it goes into public records as far as our municipal codes, and that is handled by MuniCode, and I will yield to the attorney for additional legal ramifications of this order.
As part of the service to the county, the MuniCode Corporation, the legal review of our Court of Ordinances, it suggested some cleanup points, and some of them, I think, involve subjective decision making. For example, whether or not you're going to have a road policy in the ordinances, or if it's going to be a standalone policy. So we would like to make sure the council has time to look at those suggested changes and decide if they want to make them. That's why we are suggesting that councils start the process by having first reading, and then refer to a committee after study, and the committee that looks like it provides us public health and safety.
Any, any comments from council is not, could I have a motion and second, first reading, and also a motion to referral to Public Health and Safety Committee? Welcome. Could I get a motion and a second again to that first reading on this?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Billy DeOyens and second by Mr. Ellis that we pass first reading on this and refer to Public Health and Safety Committee. Is that a motion and second? All in favor, would please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? The ayes have it, the motions carried. Item 10 is the first reading also, and this is the consideration of the committee referral that this audit is to amend the animal control court, and it's basically the same thing that I'm, I'm turning.
Except these changes come from the department recommended to the next up, to the next up, so it comes from administration on an outside entity.
But, but all of them still going to be?
Yeah, the idea, and this one, it appears would go to Parks Recreation and Agriculture.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, could we, all in favor of the motion that has been second to pass the first reading, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Official action, item number 11, acceptance of USDA grant fund for, replace our emergency operations command center that we use when we have events, natural disasters and stuff to give us a command presence out in the community on, on the site. And during that process, we located a vehicle that we felt like we got a good deal on it. The vehicle was $89,000 plus $50,000 retro, retrofitted, but since then, not resting on our lawyers, the staff and I, we've worked with USDA, and we put in an application for grant funding, and USDA, and they have representatives here tonight, that is going to award us a grant for $1,000 towards the purchase of that vehicle, which would mean the overall cost would be $40,000. We've also made contact with an additional county, in the neighboring county, and I don't want to put their name out there just yet, because we still have to finalize it, but they have offered us $26,000 for the existing vehicle. So in that effect, that we've replaced a 30-year-old vehicle by getting a close to $90,000 vehicle between the grants, and the sale of the old vehicle basically will cost the citizens probably $10,000, $11,000, something like that in the end. So I just think that's good work by the staff and Emergency Service Department for finding the ability to sell, and we thank USDA for bringing us money towards the purchase.
Yes, I would like to make that, make that motion.
Could I get a second?
Second.
There was moved by Mr. Ellis and second by, I guess, Mr. Oyens, that we pass the recommendation as was presented to us by the administrator under the attorney. All in favor, would please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to it? The ayes have it, and the motions carried. Thank you all so much. Motion and second to pass of this, please.
So much. Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Mr. Ellis that pass the recommendation from the Tax and Tourism Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motions carried. Appointments of boards, commissions, and committees. Item 8 is appointment of a court enforcement officer for the Orangeburg County Animal Control Department, and this is to Ms. Jasmine Quarles. Is that, yes, sir, would you pronounce that?
Jasmine Quarles, and she is being presented to you for commissionship as a court enforcement officer for Orangeburg County, and under the Animal Control Commission, I'm sorry, I didn't quite say that.
Okay, well, I'm going to read this, and then, court enforcement officer, animal control to Jasmine Quarles, resposing special confidence in you and acting under Section 4-9-145 of the South Carolina Court of Laws as amended. I, Johnny Wright, Senior Chairman of the Orangeburg County Council, do now and hereby commission you, Jasmine Quarles, a court enforcement officer for Orangeburg County. Appointment and commission shall terminated upon termination of your employment with Orangeburg County, or if revoked by the county council. Under this appointment, you will exercise all authority and do all acts which our court enforcement officers are allowed and required to perform under the laws of the state of South Carolina. Executed this fourth day of September 2018 in Orangeburg County, North Carolina. Ms. Quarles in?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Hi.
And thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Anything you want to say?
Um, no, just glad I have a job and doing something I love, so.
Well, that's good. If you love it, you do a good job.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moved by Mr. Ravenell and second by Mr. Hayward, for it. For Ms. Quarles, all in favor, please, if you know anybody, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds, ayes have it, the motion is carried. Item B is appointment to EMS Ambulance Committee.
Chairman, that is a appointment of Orangeburg County Council District 3 for the EMS Ambulance Committee recommending Mr. Michael E. Harley.
Moved by Mr. Remley, the district appointee of that, seconded by Mr. Billy Beards, or even Mr. Smith, one of them. That we pass this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds, ayes have it, the motion is carried. Item number C is reappointment to the Orangeburg County Library Board of Trustees.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and that's your district for the library board and commission that's being requested is Mr. Larita Hayward King.
I have spoken, and she is willing to work, and she says she give me the thumbs up to do what she has to do. Could I get someone to give a motion and second for me?
I'm going to have the chairman nominated, Ms. King.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Really, I mean by Mr. Remley, and seconded by Ms. Cooper Smith, for Ms. King being appointed to the library board, real appointed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds, ayes have it, the motion is carried. Update, I will yield to the Public Works Committee Chair, Mr. Johnny Ravenel.
Chairman, committee, council, we have a few items on our list today. Public Works Committee, first of all, about the irrigation system impacting our county roads. And we have problems before, and some of them solved, and some of them have not been solved. But the recommendation on the, the irrigation system that impacting our county roads is that we motion and seconding the Public Works meeting. The, the administrator would identify, the staff would identify the roads that were still being violated, and ask the attorney to, ask our county attorney to make sure to be sent a letter and to the individuals who are in violation of public water, turn it on our dirt roads. That is in the form of a motion.
Could I get a second on that motion made by the Public Works Committee Chairperson about the letter? Could I get a second? Moved by Mr. Ravenel, and seconded by one of the committee members, Mr. Livingston, follow through on the letter, second. All, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds to that? The ayes have it, the motion is carried.
The next one, I generally had a wonderful discussion about the UAS, UAS at the landfill. And for those who don't know, the UAS is electronics that are being placed in the landfill in large quantities. We had discussion in formal committee to look at how we can curtail some of this, and that was just for discussion. It's supposed to come back in two weeks, and I'll give you the recommendation. Third one was the law, the law was damaging the county dirt roads. That one also is put into a committee, and hopefully that committee will come back in two weeks and give us some recommendation of what's happening is law is cutting timber, and tearing up our dirt road and leaving them in bad condition, and walking off and leaving them, leaving them. So we decided to put out a committee and come back and cover each sort of recommendation as well.
Thank you so much. That concludes, so, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ravenel. That concludes the update of the Public Works Committee. Next item is a vote for executive session. Executive session to, on the following items, the industrial park development, Project Creek, Project Sandboat, and the Gateway Enhancement Zone. For those items, I would entertain a motion and a second that we go into executive session to discuss. Yes, ma'am?
It needs to be a reference to what the executive session section is, and it is 30-4-70A, 2, and 5, which is contract negotiations and economic development expansions and establishments.
Thank you, county attorney, I appreciate that. Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and seconded by Mr. Daley, that we go into executive session to discuss those items. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds to it? Okay, I guess, the ayes have it, the motion is carried. Vote for enjoyment, but before I adjourn, does anybody have any comments?
The other vehicle we have was 30 years old. It was in dire need of replacement, and that particular vehicle is set up operationally to handle in the field, and then also in the event of a natural disaster, for some reason the emergency services with a 911 dispatch is, is made inoperable. Because of the investments you have made into the digital phone systems, we can move the digital phone from there to the emergency operation vehicle, and also still function 911 and other capabilities. Those of you who remember the hurricane in Branchfield, floods in Holly Hill, and other areas, when we have natural disasters of large scale, the emergency operations centers allows us to park that in a location in that, in that vicinity, and handle things like emergency building permits and other stuff that come along with dealing with that unit. And we also have a new vehicle for emergency operations that we have gotten from the Sheriff's Department. As a, we've upgraded security in, in multiple buildings, as well as with video cameras. The last one, we did a grant specifically for multiple buildings, including any and blow for warning system, so that tells in the event of an active shooter, hurricane, disaster, any of those things, that stuff is in play. We actually have props card readers, we have, and then nothing takes place better than just old-fashioned law enforcement. We'd like to thank Mr. Cliff Gilborn, who's officer for this facility, and several other sheriff deputies around the county, who actually police our buildings and do a fine job.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Any other comments from any other council question? If not, could I have a motion and a second for enjoyment? Thank you all for attending our meeting.
Thank you.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second. Thank you so much.